Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of January 15th, 2019. The Board went into executive session as to Reason 3, which is litigation update, having to do with Dakota Partners and also Elm Street Dam. We have present four Selectmen right now.
Five, he'll be here in a minute.
And Tony will be here in a minute. Town Administrator Derek Sullivan and Legal Counselor Rich Bowen. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Well, this is gonna be a wonderful night, might as well have my wife get it out of the way, start it off right. Go ahead, Mrs. Slavin.
Get it started.
Your first shot at us.
That's inevitable.
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the announcements, I'd like to apologize. We did miss last week mentioning that we had basically two things come through the newspaper while I was away. One was the Woman of the Year and one was the Man of the Year. John Walczak, of course, was Man of the Year for the town of Wareham. And Claire Smith, our moderator, was the Woman of the Year. I'd like to recognize both of them. I do apologize for missing that last week. Okay, Tony, you have any announcements?
No, all set, thank you.
I do not.
Tomorrow night is the drop-in center at the church. Does anybody knows anybody, anybody who has a problem ongoing relevant to drug or alcohol abuse, please go to the drop-in center. It starts at 5:00 o'clock, runs till 9:00.
Sure.
It's at the Church of the Good Shepherd. There's a big sign down in the center if you want to see it.
Next to the leaf thing.
Yeah, next to the big board.
Okay, the Wareham Historical Society again has an event, I think it's at 6:00 or 6:30 on...
Seven.
Thank you, Mrs. Slavin. We'll correct that to seven, at the 495 Main Street. I believe Howie Smith and I don't remember the other gentleman will be doing a discussion. Open to the public and also to the members of the historical society. I'm gonna make a little announcement here. I did receive a email on how we do appointments, and it was brought to my attention that we aren't following the Charter, Section 7-8 and Section 84A, which talks about advertising actual openings for appointments on multi-member boards. I should know better personally because I wrote part of that stuff at one time. But we have been just going ahead and working on the basis that the boards themselves list their openings, are supposed to really post them on their own website, section of the town website. And basically, we wait until we hear from the board with a recommendation, and then we appoint from there. So as of right now, for the time being, we'll go back to the system as listed, because it does state in 84A that any multi-member board, referring back to Section 7-8, we are supposed to advertise those openings. With the number of boards we have, et cetera, the cost to advertise such things is prohibitive. So I probably are gonna recommend a little later on that we discuss possible Warren Article to maybe eliminate that piece and change the makeup. I've already spent some time listing, updating all the different committees, boards, commissions of the town, and I'll have a master list of any openings. But on the town website, there will be a list of actual openings. It will show if the person's term is up, if there is an opening or not. And what I hope happens is that the boards, when they know they have an opening that comes out of not the normal timeframe, they will post that as well. Thank you. Citizens' comments? Mrs. Slavin? You're there.
I'll let her go first. I'll be far.
You sure?
Sure.
She'll kill me first, so.
Come on, Mr. Slavin. We've missed you.
Yeah? Well, I'm back.
Vacation and all. You were hiding out in the desert.
Yes. Sandy Slavin, I'm here to talk about Charter Review. I went online looking for the Charter to review it, and it's dated 2016. I don't understand why we can't get a current version of it up on the website for people to look at. There have been some miscellaneous changes that have been made via town meeting, and I think they should be reflected and updated. And I don't know who's responsible for updating that charter, but it's 2016 is the date on it. Now, I really believe we really do need a Charter Review Committee, a formal, identified, organized review of that charter every 10 years. I know that there is one Selectman who does not want it done. I really think the town has to recognize that that charter is our constitution. We, as individuals of the town, should have a consistent, organized review of that charter every 10 years. I think it would be a disservice for the town to not form a Charter Review Committee. I know that I submitted my application a couple months ago, and there are some concerns that I have an agenda to change the charter. Now, I totally understand that. I do have some concerns with some changes that have been recently made in the charter. But the Charter Committee is made of nine people. I would just be one voice on it. If anybody's got some concern, I really do step up, put your papers in, and let's get a formal committee together to review the charter as a total group of citizens and not leave it to... We'll do one at a time. Let's make... I just heard of a change for Charter Review because of the way it's in there written for the committee appointments. Do it consistently and review the whole document as one time to be submitted to town meeting, because nothing can be done until town meeting approves it, as done in that, what, 2011 town meeting? We had 70-some-odd articles, and it was a long one. But I... Just to the people out there, step up, put your name in, and formally review that charter. It is your right, and it is your constitution, to determine how this town is run, and that's done with the charter. Thank you.
Jim? Evening. Jim Meneese, Precinct 4, Cranberry Highway. I was the one that sent Alan an email regarding the process you use for committee appointments. I would think that with the experience on the Board that you would understand that there was a process that we're supposed to go through. Excuse me. Now, as far as the publication, I understand that, but they're also supposed to be put on the bulletin boards?
I actually have the Charter provision up on my phone here.
Yeah, that's all right, I have it right here. Go ahead.
Yeah, it actually doesn't say anything about publication. It says cause public notice, which is not the same as publication.
Well, you have to go to the...
The other section may refer to that.
Correct. It's kind of... And with a Charter Review, maybe that could be all brought together so that it wouldn't be split up in different parts of the Charter. So the recent posting, there was no posting of the position openings for the zoning board of appeals. And the process doesn't say that the chairman finds friends or people that they like who want to be on the committee. It says, you know, you put it on the website, you pull it on the board, I publish it in a paper, so people who are interested in can submit their application and their qualifications. And it's an open and transparent process, all right? So everybody else in town didn't get an opportunity, who may be interested, to apply for the positions on the zoning board of appeals. And this is an injustice to the citizens of the town here, all right? And this isn't the first time it's happened. And I'm not blaming anyone in particular, I'm not pointing fingers, but we can't do business like this. It's unacceptable. And, you know, you mentioned who was on there, and looked up the names, where they lived, and I just don't... I think really you should rescind the vote, post it as properly, move forward from this day forward, that you're gonna post the things online and on the bulletin boards. And the official posting for the bulletin board, if I'm correct, is outside of the clerk's office. It's not... No, go up to the Selectmen's Office and see it. It's outside of the clerk's office. And then also on the marquee out in front of the building. Thank you.
Is there one comment to make?
No, because we're really not prepared for it. See ya, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Next, Board comments, Tony?
No, all set.
Mary?
I'll save mine for when we get to town meeting articles.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good right now.
I'll wait until... Actually, I'll make it now. The Planning Board, as we know, at the fall town meeting, had four articles, I believe, that went for further study. I'm just gonna make my comment now, that I am concerned that this is the 15th of February, and there has been no work or action on any of those articles, excuse me, January, wish it was February, go to sleep for a while. And they only have two meetings before we have the cutoff date of February 4th. And I don't see how possibly they're going to work on these, where they haven't done anything at all up to this point. I keep reminding everybody that when we have Warren Articles, et cetera, when fall town meeting comes up because of the holiday season, before you know it, you're right up against the deadline, and everybody seems to ignore the fact and let it slide. So I don't know how we're gonna see any of those articles come forward. And one article in particular really hamstrings the Department of Inspection Services and maybe to do their job properly. And it's already been a year, two meetings where this has basically not happened. So I'm just putting out there that I don't know how, but they need to somehow get this work done and get it done properly. And they have had enough notice, so I apologize if I accept anybody in the Planning Board, but I am concerned and a little disturbed that there's been nothing. Thank you.
It says, "Discussion on Appointments to the Charter Review Committee."
Let me save this for just later on. Well, yeah, I mean, in your package this week, you all received a draft of what I wrote to propose for a Warren Article to delete the Charter Review Committee. I've gotta be honest, when you're talking about writing law, there's a reason that people like Town Counsel and I went to law school for three years, read hundreds of books, studied thousands of questions for the bar exam, and went through all this stuff to bang law into our thick skulls, and that's because it's fairly complex. And to me, having nine citizens, no matter how well-educated they may be in their own fields, how well-qualified they may be in their own fields, asking them to go through a document like our Charter, which is many pages long, and try to rewrite the thing, try to rewrite the law, I mean, I wouldn't send my electronics to a South American tribe to fix. I think it's silly to expect nine people without legal experience to try to rewrite the foundational document of the town. We kinda saw what happened the last time we had a Charter Review Committee. We had 40-something articles come forward. I'm not even sure how many passed.
13.
I mean, we had people who wanted to do away with the town government. We had people who wanted to do this. You know, anybody can get a petition together if they don't like something in the Charter and bring it to town meeting and try to change the Charter that way. I don't know why we formalize this every X number of years. So that's my feeling.
Tony, any comments?
No, I would tend to... I agree. I agree.
That does make a lot of sense, and if it's an article that would be on, you know, for town meeting, it's something that people could vote on. I think we're gonna be hard-pressed to find nine people right now after what happened last time.
Patrick?
Well, you know, it's a tough thing, and the reason why it's tough is because the Charter was originally written by people, just like you and I, with no lawyers involved, and they actually wrote it. Of course, the problem was, when they did write it, they wrote it because they were angry at the time, and I don't know if everybody remembers this, but they were. And they wrote it in order to take the power away from the Selectmen. And in recent times, there's been some Charter Committees that wanted to take the power away from the Town Administrator, or the power away from here, and typically, that's what happens, is we get that kind of thing going on, where they wanna try to shift the balance of power from the Charter from one place to another. Not so sure that that's a good thing to do just because we're angry. Sometimes I think it requires a lot more thought than that when we decide to make those moves. In recent times, we have made some changes in the Charter, and whether good or bad, they have yet to be seen. And we did some of them out of some kind of anger of one thing or another. Typically, when we make decisions out of anger, it doesn't usually work very well. At least, that's what I find, anyway. You know, it's a hard thing to say. I'm not so sure that the nine-year thing works, and we should probably have some discussion about it and how to handle it at some point.
Well, obviously, for me, it's a little difficult situation since in 2009, volunteering for that particular committee. The way that committee was put together, if you answer the questions correctly, you go put on it. If you didn't get put on it, you didn't. And we have a member of the audience, her husband was really, I think, pretty badly insulted when he went up to apply for that as well, which was really bothering me a lot back then, how they did it. And they did go for pretty radical, you know, mayor and Town Council. But they did come back with 45 articles, and a lot of them were rejected simply because the way it was all put together. So, yeah, there's been issues with all this going forward. I've been asking for people to step up for the Charter Review Committee since probably November at the latest, and we have two so far, and it's pretty sad. So I think we're gonna probably put this on the agenda and discuss it.
You know...
And see, if people want it, and if it turns out this way and nobody steps up, then at town meeting, they can vote.
You know, the good news is that we have town meeting, because I don't know about you guys, but town meeting is always a very thoughtful body. I've always found that since I came to this town many, many years ago. It's always been a very thoughtful body, and even when they come up with those, get wild and do some things like that, town meeting sees through that stuff, and they usually make some pretty good decisions. So, thank God for that.
Yeah, and in none of this am I suggesting that the Charter as it is presently constituted is perfect. I see things in the Charter that should be in the bylaws, I see things in the bylaws that should be in the Charter. I mean, I could sit down with Town Counsel and Town Administrator, Town Moderator, and I'm sure we could come up with 20 or 30 things that could be changed in less than two hours. But I just think that having people, you know, sit down and go at it, it's difficult. That's why you wind up with 45 articles, that's why you only get so many of them passed, because they just don't have the training and experience to write law and understand the implications of when you change the law, what that means. So that was the impetus for this.
Well, and the benefit is, if this does go on to town meeting, then you might end up with nine people in the audience that, you know, if it failed at town meeting, there might be nine people that say, yes, I'm gonna stand up and...
Might be, yeah.
You know, sign up.
All right, license and permits. Next is the application for a one-day license for Wareham Oyster Festival. Come on down. Hello?
Hi, guys.
Hi.
How is everyone today?
Good.
Good?
Fine, thank you.
There we go. All right, so this is getting to be quite the event.
We think so.
Yes, it is.
Every year, it kinda gets bigger and more improved, and it's kind of been... I go there, it's fun. I've had a great time.
Good time.
Down there, I don't know if everybody else has gone.
Oh, I have.
My time gets worse in the 5K every year.
I spend more time there every year myself, you know? So it's kinda fun. A lot of good stuff goes on. You want... Anybody have any questions? Wanna ask them?
No.
No, I like the expanded alcohol service hours.
Great.
And I think many, many thousands of others will as well.
Do you wanna explain any changes or anything at all from the norm, or just go over?
Well, I think all of you have been to the event before. This is our sixth year. We're planning, once again, to offer a variety of shellfish and other food options. We hope to get approval to offer beer and wine. We'll have live music and crafters, and the 5K road race to benefit the Boys and Girls Club of Wareham. And we are also planning educational programs that occur during the week before the event. Last year, we had about, excuse me, about 100 people participated in those educational programs, some of which were offered in conjunction with the Buzzards Bay Coalition and some other groups. We had 150 people complete the 5K, I think, including yourself.
Really?
You crossed the line.
Some of the changes that we're looking at for this year is to expand the music down to the fire station area, because as you all have probably seen, it's a little bit quiet down there. So we're looking at ways to either broadcast some of the music from Pezzoli Square to that location, or have another musical performance happening over there. We're not proposing a rain date. We don't think you can win with that. Everybody's gonna second-guess how we did it, as they did last year. So we're proposing to have more tents instead. I think you all have seen a lot of the publicity that this event brings to the town. We got mentioned last year in Mass Vacation, Boston Central, South Shore Living, Edible South Shore, and in boston.com, we were one of the six New England towns to visit in May. We get all kinds of social media activity and so forth. And then, as you also know, we get grants from the local cultural council and the mass cultural council, but no other tax dollars are used for this event. It's all private sponsorships, and we have 15 to 20 businesses and individuals who contribute to the event. This past year, we offered a $500 scholarship through Wareham High School, but didn't get any qualified applicants, so we'll be looking at how to do that again this year. And so what we're asking for is for you to approve our application for a one-day permit and use of town property. We will provide the tip certification and insurance binder, as we have done in the past, as we get closer to the event. Any questions?
All right, you ready?
Before we do, any questions for the Board at all?
I move, we approve the Wareham Oyster Festival's one-day wine and malt beverage license under the provisions of Chapter 138, Section 14, and that it happen to be given Saturday, May 26, 2019.
It's Sunday, actually.
It says Saturday on the thing here, okay.
Let's cross that out.
May 20. It is the 26th, yeah.
That's a Sunday, it's scribner. We're gonna... Scribner. I know who Scribner is, okay. And do you have a time? There's no time in here either. Time.
I think we close the roads around 9:00.
Okay, well, okay, so 9:00.
And then, I also believe that the liquor license has to be for additional time, just so we can move things around and...
Okay, so what time do you close?
We close at 5:00.
Why don't you make it 6:00? I'll make it 6:00.
Okay.
And I'll make it, start it at 8:00, and that way it'll give you time to move the stuff around.
Yeah.
All right, so on Sunday, May 26th, between 8:00 and 6:00 o'clock in the evening. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain. Okay, anybody else who needs to go?
Nope. Looking forward to it.
I'll see you all there.
Thank you.
There was nothing here for anything else.
Bigger and better.
Oh, yeah, it's a special license.
Should talk to WCTV about possibly carrying a feed down to the fire station if you wanted...
All right, so then we've got...
Maybe they could do something for you?
I move, we also authorize the use of town roads, right, for... And Main Street and Pezzoli Square.
Second.
For the same time period on May 26, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions for the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain. 500. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Update of plan for the sixth, we got that. Vote to relocation of precincts.
Yeah, let's shuffle around.
I don't have it. There's nothing in here.
I think it says something we did, we're just gonna confirm it, we discussed it last week.
Okay, all right, so we're all set. We had a difference, didn't we have a change in the precinct number?
Yeah, it's the... Our particular piece is corrected. I believe what it said was Precinct 4, it's Precinct 6 on here. So the publication that went out earlier had the wrong...
It should be 3 and 4, right?
Oh, should be 3 and 6.
3 and 6, okay.
It was 3 and 4.
All right, so 3 and 6, all right.
Go ahead, you can read it off as it's...
All right, okay, so the vote on relocation of the precincts. First off, Precinct 3 will be moved to Hammond School, 13 Highland Ave, onset, and Precinct 6 will be moved to the fire station located at 281 Glen Charlie Road in East Wareham. Okay, so for anybody who's in those precincts, please remember that the precincts are moving. Please, with the press folks, please make sure to, you know, bold that, and maybe when we get close to the election, would you also maybe run it again?
We could run it also on the electronic signs that...
And we'll put it on the signs and stuff as well.
Everybody gets a notice mailed to under state law, they have to get a mailed notice.
Yeah, but you know, just to make sure that nobody can say that they didn't get notified, we wanna make sure they come.
Nobody signed it.
Yes.
I need a second.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions from the Board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain, 500. Thank you.
All right, discussion and vote whether to revise the decision made at a previous dog hearing. It was the hearing of the Crossman.
Oh, God bless you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe the parties, all parties, including our enforcement officer, have come up with a change from our original one. If you wanna read that and...
All right, here we go. On July 31, 2018, a public hearing was held for the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Chapter 140, Section 157, concerning the complaints involving the dog, Sandra Crossman's dog, Daisy. After the close of the hearing, of the evidential hearing, based on the testimony hearing and the exhibits present, the Board determined that the dog was found to be deemed dangerous. As of a conversation on January 3, 2019, taking into consideration the additional information present to the department, and with the authority granted by the Wareham Board of Selectmen, we have agreed to change the decision of dangerous to at risk. The following restrictions will be placed on your dog, Daisy. That dog, that your dog, is to be humanely restrained at all times in such manner as to prevent the dog's escape from your property, or to prevent the dog from running off-leash at any time off your property. The dog is only to be walked by an adult 18 years or older. The dog may only leave owner's property accompanied by a controlling person on a leash of not more than four feet, having a minimal tensile strength of 300 pounds. Behavioral training for the trainer approved by animal control officer. After two years of compliance, the dog shall no longer be considered at risk. Okay?
This goes to the fine schedule, which is standard.
Yeah, the fine, that's... We don't have to say that. So that's the change.
Sir.
Be a motion to...
That's a motion, yes, to change.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions from the Board?
Nope.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain, 500.
This also solves the court appeal that the Crossman's filed.
Yes, it takes...
That's been dismissed.
All right, we have, next is the layout of Candle Paper Lane. I have the paperwork here if anybody wants to look at it.
I'll read the Board, the Planning Board's response that was done last night.
Oh, did they? Oh, okay, so...
Candle Paper Lane Street Acceptance, that was done yesterday at the meeting. This came from Ken Buckland, dear Chairman Slavin and Selectmen. The Planning Board voted last night to recommend that Candle Paper Lane be advanced for acceptance as a town street. The Planning Board viewed a photographic record of the Asbilt Road and received letter reports from municipal maintenance and consulting engineer Charlie Rowley with both findings, the road to be constructed according to plan in a condition that meets town standards.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, I've got some concerns before we would...
Okay.
We also have to make sure they have the Asbilt and the other records that the clerk's also reviewing by everybody.
First, there's, I wanna make sure that we're just accepting the street layout, AKA the traveled way. There's utilities that run under this road, and we are not accepting those. Rowley, with both findings, the road to be constructed according to plan in a condition that meets town standards.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some concerns before we would...
Okay.
We also have to make sure they have the as-built and the other records of the clerk's office reviewing by everybody.
First, there's, I want to make sure that we're just accepting the street layout, AKA the traveled way. There's utilities that run under this road, and we are not accepting those.
What do you have on your, on your paperwork there, Patrick? Is there an exception there?
An exception?
No, that's the street and not anything else.
Let me ask the planning board. It says, let's take a peek.
Because what they're saying here doesn't mention that at all.
Yeah, I'm just going to check it. If you're going to give me a second, I'll look through it.
Have the utility shown on the plan?
There always is.
Utility here.
Show on the plan, let me check it. I'll look at it right now.
Would have liked to have seen it in here.
Jeez. Dr. Jeeves, over there. The electrical, the electric is not shown on the plan.
So, we may have to hold and make sure that that is correct.
Yeah, that's not, that's not on the plan.
Because we have to see what's posted down in the clerk's office.
I'm assuming it's underground because this is a purely new street.
Yeah, everything appears to be underground.
So, it's probably underground, which is required, of course, by law. And they should be in front of each of the, in each of the lot, there should be a location of the, what do you call it, they're not there.
The box.
Location of the electrical box.
Mr. Bowen.
Sir.
Would you be best, as a board, to hold on this for another week or so, make sure that what's required is there, it starts posting downstairs in the clerk's office? I'm sorry, Bob. What I'm asking is, Mr. Bowen, to give us an answer whether or not we should hold off a week and make sure that the posting that's downstairs, the paperwork shows what has to be there, since there's nothing on this thing from the planning board that mentions that at all.
I think it would be the, it's certainly within your power to do it, and I think it would be the right thing as well.
Well, I want to make sure it's the right thing.
It is.
Thank you.
There's a couple other items that maybe we should go through as well. I'm sorry to be the stickler on this.
No, that's okay.
There's a lot E, which is in the roundabout.
Yep.
There, which is an unbuildable lot. Typically, what I see, especially once we take over the roads, is that whoever owns that lets it go into tax title, and then it becomes town property.
Right.
I've got a real issue with that. It's, even though there's just, I mean, it's valued at maybe $10,000, but we've seen that where suddenly we have all these land of low value, it's our responsibility. I don't know if there's anything we can do with that.
Starting to put cell towers on them?
Yeah, well...
Then they'll come up with a solution.
My other thing is, I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly, is there currently no streetlights on the street. However, number six said, "Streetlighting is required by the Town of Wareham's rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land."
But did they get conditions that eliminated that? What's going to happen with that question?
This is their certificate of approval of a definitive plan.
Yeah.
I don't want us to, as soon as we take over, getting the, getting bombarded phone calls that we need to put streetlights up there.
Does that have a clause in it, that says they have to have a light with a pole in front of their house?
I haven't seen anything to that, but...
That's the other possibility, too.
I just got these questions from the planning board. I haven't taken a look.
Yeah.
I have to ask that as well.
And streetlights are always a problem, you know, because sometimes the contractors will put them up and then abandon them, and it's just happened recently, and this is not a good thing.
All right, then they...
I have a question back on that circle piece of land. Maybe use the old record of that line.
The developer, Conish. So, that's what I'm saying, we see that left and right.
Yeah.
I'm not saying he would do that, but we've seen it in the past.
Okay.
And the last thing is, there is a sidewalk in this development. I think we should accept the street layout, but not the sidewalk. The sidewalk should not be the town's responsibility.
Yeah, because all I have here is for the street, nothing to do with anything else.
Well, I just, I want to make sure that we properly clarify that, because I was sending up the machine to Candle Paper to take care of that sidewalk, it's not...
Can you take all these points, put it into a sheet, Senator Ken?
Yep.
And let him get the planning board back to us, and we'll wait maybe two weeks rather than one week?
Okay, sounds good.
To get this done correctly?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, thank you for picking up on it. Okay.
Okay, next, this discussion and vote to include articles on the spring town meeting warrant.
I don't think everybody, I don't think mine got out, I sent it to Janet, but I don't think...
It didn't come to me.
It didn't come out.
Didn't come out here.
Didn't come out, so, we just gloss over this and get it next week. We should probably have the grid ready next week and probably sit down with Derek and get, get the ones, like, the ones from nine that are every single year on there.
There is a couple, Mr. Chairman, that if you wouldn't mind, that I'd like to see. One, we are now coming up on the five-year state-mandated revaluation, so, we're going to need to transfer some free cash to fund that. And also, Borrego Solar Projects, we're going to need the solar pilot agreements. I believe there'll be a total of four agreements, because there's one for each separate parcel. That's the...
Yeah, I saw three. Yeah, there's at least three last night, the planning board.
Right, so, we're currently in negotiations with them. You know, usually, we've done it two separate ways. One is just the authorization to negotiate and execute them from town meeting, and the other is having the actual executed. It's, you know...
It just depends on timing.
I would prefer that we just, we're in negotiations, I think we're close, but I hate thinking that we missed the deadlines for the warrant, and then suddenly, we're telling them, we have to wait till October, and it blows the whole thing up.
You know, the pilot agreements in October might be a whole different handling.
Correct.
Anybody have any articles that they want to put in or thinking about? Because again, February 4th is like here.
I have one for October already, actually several for October.
Yeah, sure.
I don't want to wait till October.
Normally zoning articles, even street acceptance is supposed to all be in October.
Yeah, that's been the tradition, but it's not actually written anywhere.
It's not written, but it makes it a lot easier, because you get plenty of time for hearings and stuff. I did mention about, we'll make, I'll put something together as far as what we do for advertising and how we handle the open appointments, so it's transparent and clear to everybody, and make it so it's financially feasible as well, and make sure it's followed through.
Yeah, I mean...
I take partially responsibility, because I used to actually, over the last three or four years, I would actually list all the committees that were open, have to, if you take it and give it to the office, so they always had it, and they could post it out.
I've been on the board for over six years, and the charter provision hasn't changed in that time, so I guess none of us knew what was going on.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, as far as a look back, I don't think we can just look back at the last set of appointments, we'd have to look back at the last...
I know.
10 years, so...
Actually, we haven't, we haven't done that, we have not fulfilled that as long as I can remember.
That goes back to your time.
I go back a long ways. It's been precedent the way we've done it. It's not necessarily the right way, obviously, but it's, it's been the way it's been done since, God, the early 90s anyway. And I'll bet you, all the way back to the inception of the charter, we haven't done that.
Yeah, there's probably some chief town administrator who said, "I'm not paying to publish all that crap," and that was the end of it.
Yeah, that didn't...
Wise person.
Obviously, didn't happen, so...
Bottom line, I want to clean that source.
Yeah, yeah, you got to...
We should get the charter...
Yeah, and you know what, let's fix it. I mean, it really, you know, there's really nothing secret or deceptive here. Let's make it clear to everybody that we have a lot of trouble getting people to sign up for these committees. We got to, you know, chase them down, and I want to make it clear that none of us have ever gone and got our friends to go on a committee for one reason or another, not that I know of, anyway. And I've been around for a few years, as you well know.
It's usually the other way around, actually.
And I don't remember anybody saying, "Jeez, I got my friend Joe wants to be on this committee." As a matter of fact, we go out of our way, and I know I have, to avoid just that.
Well, I'll tell you something, if you have a friend and you put them on a committee, they won't remain your friend.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. That's exactly what happens, and you, you got to stay away from that kind of stuff, you know? And none of us have ever done that, that I know of, and I hope that nobody ever will.
Mr. Sullivan, town administrator's report?
I've been giving it to you all night, so...
I know you have. Especially the ride this morning.
So...
We won't explain that one, though.
No, that could get me in hot water, so... All right, thank you. You can talk about the bike path meeting, or the bike share meeting. Sure.
Okay.
All right.
There is no... Mr. Sullivan, is that...
Oh.
Charlie, you have any reports still here?
No, I'll sit, thank you.
Wow. That's it? That's what you had? That was it?
No.
Wow, you must be busy.
Patrick.
I did, we, I did have a discussion with the sewer department relevant to hooking up, mandatory hookups to the sewer department, to the sewer pipe. Now, there were, there's a lot of issues around this, and we're going to try to clarify them, and we may have to clarify them in October in order to fix the problem. But there was, there has been, this has been going around and around for years, and there was, that sometimes in the documents, when we went out and did our bonding and stuff, where we had approved the portion of state law that allows it to be mandatory, that you had to hook up. And then we gave an exemption for so many years if they had just installed the system.
Yes.
Right. Well, it appears that that's kind of messy and needs to be dealt with, and that's, I think we have to bring that in October to fix that.
Yeah, I think we also missed some areas that were not manuturation.
Yes, that's correct, we did. And one of the problems is, is that when you, when you have sewer available, you should be connecting to the sewer pipe. You paid for the betterment, you might as well pay to put the pipe in. And believe it or not, you know, the cost is considerably less than putting a septic system in.
Yeah.
So, and especially in some of the areas where we have sewer, and as you well know, most of the sewer areas are very, usually in precarious positions. They're all along the waterfronts and things of that nature. And so, we, you know, we want people to hook into those sewer lines, and we're going to have to make sure that that happens, instead of putting another septic in their yard, you know? We're going to have to come up with some regulation regarding that. And I think that's what we're going to have to put on, and it's not a good time now, is we need more time to develop it and everything, so I think it needs to go on in October.
It's a little expensive for the town and for the residents and for...
So, I did talk to them, and I told them I would find out the information, which, by the way, I was supposed to relay them tomorrow.
All set?
Yep.
Okay, as I mentioned, planning board met last night, and they basically took a few issues to take care of. This morning, myself and Mr. Sullivan did go to the bike share meeting at UMass Docmouth. We have the communities of Fairhaven, Matipoiset, New Bedford have been running this program for a year. It's been fairly successful, they're pretty happy with it. Serped, who is underwriting this program as far as the timeframe of setting it up, has 27 communities. They're going to try and do an RFP for a whole complete program for all communities if they're interested. I know Ken Buckland did send a note to Serped saying that Wareham might be interested. So, we'll see what happens, there'll be an RFP, there'll be some information. Basically, these bikes are, have a, you know, a GPS system built into the bikes, you pick up the bike wherever they're set up, you can drive it somewhere, bicycle, leave it at a designated area, and you get charged for, I think it was a dollar an hour?
Yes.
You know, and so, it's, we have some areas. We're a little difficult, because we're a, you know, waterfront community, but we're also a very rural community, so it's hard to find like a concentrated area like in a city where, you know, bicycling would really work well. Was mentioned to me, actually, was Baypoint, and the people at Baypoint, I believe Derek told me, they would have interest in it, simply because in that community, their people, you know, would probably use something like that, maybe in Onset, where the OBA was talking a little bit about it. Our concern also is people rent bikes. We don't have a lot of bicycle rental places, but I know we have Mill Pond Diner. Next door is the old liquor store there that has a bicycle store.
He rents.
He rents, but what was interesting today in the meeting was that both Matipoiset and Fairhaven, people there, said that the bicycle stores in both those towns had no issue, because it actually increased their sales by having the bikes available to try in York and then come back, and they bought bikes. So, they were completely far, which really surprised me.
I, I can't see that, but I can't see that, I'm very skeptical.
Well, we already know that you're, you're basically a no unless we change your mind on that one.
Well, you know, I'm always open, you know that, to think about stuff, but, you know...
So, what I want to do is, I want to go with, basically, to that store in particular and sit down and say, hey...
Yeah, well, that's what you want to ask.
You know, does this work? Can it work for you?
It's not only that, but we also have some places that, you know, hotels and things of that nature that also rent bicycles.
I know, that's where we're looking at.
And they make money, and so, we're in a kind of an interesting place, because we have the beach and the canal's not far away, and they can rent and drive down there. Now, as everybody knows, there's several places along the canal that rent bicycles.
There's one left, no. A guy just went out recently.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Well, so, there's one left, but there was, there was two.
It used to be two.
It used to be two, yeah. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I just don't want to hurt the businesses, and I want to make sure that we don't hurt the businesses. If they're willing to say, "Yeah, okay, we got no problem with it," then I wouldn't have a problem.
Well, that's what we're looking at, at a complete open thing, rather than saying we're going to do it now.
Yeah, because I just don't want to hurt the businesses, that's all, you know? I know they, they have a very short season, especially in the bike business.
I heard you.
You know? Very short, and I want them to be able to...
Heard you, Patrick.
I want them to survive.
Okay.
Saying it's a yes.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, the other piece, which is really disturbing, which I'll have to put on the thing, is we have a bike path committee, we have the Friends of the Bike Path. Friends of the Bike Path, I think, have disappeared and gone somewhere else off the bike path. The Bike Path Committee is down to two members, which means they don't function at all. We have a $5 million project that's been approved that I've been working with Serped through the Transportation Division for the state and federal government. The project originally was going to be in 2019, but we weren't ready, so we got pushed back to 2021. Matipoiset took our place, and they'll have their bike path in Marion during this year. The bike path right now, because of our, because we didn't have enough direction, enough people working on this, is at 2023 on what they call the Federal TIP Program, which means the money's been assigned, and it's there, I think it's $5.1 million, which is, to me, an outrageous amount of money to have, cost-wise, to basically run a bike path down Minot Ave, is what it amounts to, which I just, I can't comprehend why it's $5 million, but that's what it is. The town has already spent $200,000 of CPA funds for engineering way back, I think, four years ago, maybe five, when it started.
Like, a long time.
All right, Mrs. Slavin says 10, but I think her fingers are...
She's probably right, because I would have voted for it.
Whatever, either way, it's a long time ago, so we've already invested $200,000, and what I think I'm going to do is ask this committee to, at this point, so nobody is stepping up and doing anything, is to sunset the bike path committee and put it on our responsibilities, maybe to Mr. Buckland to follow through and keep after it, and see if we can get this done. It's on 2023, I, nothing, I'm just making Ken's life wonderful. The problem is, is that if we don't do it and we lose it, we don't get something else instead, it goes to someone else, period. You know, it doesn't come back to us in any other way, shape, or form, so I really don't want to throw away $5 million worth of projects of the town of Wareham.
Originally, the plan was to narrow the lanes on Minot Ave.
I know.
Is that still part of it?
Not really, because they're going to take land and stuff. The project is actually done and...
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
You take one foot away each side on those lanes, you'll have five head-ons a year there.
Well, that's the problem, is that's why it's so expensive, you have to take some land and stuff.
Okay.
So, either way, anybody looking on, I also on Minot Ave, see the, feel the land clearing there? Those are, I believe, duplexes, three, that are being built there. Everybody, when they first looked, thought it might have been Mr. Giancarlo's extension of the old Snow and Jones. His building is going to the left, the ones to the right are actually duplexes that are going in there for housing. That's all I got.
Some of that land was cleared years ago, I remember that, so they're just completing the clearing for the rest of it?
Oh, that's a pretty good-sized clearing, if you want.
Oh, there is now, yeah, I went down there today.
Yeah.
Did, you know, I'm just thinking, did anybody get the plans over to them, about the, roughly, the expanded bike path, with them changing?
I made mention of it, but I believe where they're going to be doing their work is on the right side rather than the left, in that area.
Okay.
So, I think we're okay.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
All right, you ready? Minutes, I move, we approve the March 20, 2018 regular selectmen session minutes. Everybody was there.
Not Mary.
Not me.
Not Mary.
Oh, Mary was not there, that's right. Sorry.
Motion by Patrick, second by...
Second.
Tony. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0-1.
Okay, this one here, Peter's going to have to make the motion, because I was absent. This is an executive session.
You have to sign that one, too.
Yep. I move to approve and hold the executive session minutes from November 14, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Tony. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both abstained, you were not there?
Uh-huh, I was not there.
Okay, 4-0-1.
Yeah, okay. Peter signs that, and that leaves us adjournment. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Patrick to adjourn, second by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0-0. Good night, Wareham.